Welcome everyone. I now call this notice and call of special city council meeting today, November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Call this meeting to order, roll call please.
District one, council member Casey.
Here.
District two, council member Vera.
Yeah.
District four, council member Martinez.
Present.
District three, vice mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Citizens communication, while the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes. Members of the public and public interested in the city council during the special meeting may address the items which have been described in the notice of special meeting in accordance with the government code section five, four, nine, five, four, three. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum, the rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. Anyone in the public, seeing none, bring this back, public period is now closed. Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, council rules and procedures workshop. I hand this over to you, Nubia, good morning, by the way.
Good morning, mayor, good, good morning, council members and staff. This is a continuation of our rules and procedures workshop that we originally started last year. And that feels like last year is actually earlier this year. Upon referral by the mayor, we did set the first meeting for this in March. And we're bringing it back to you for further direction. So to remind the council of the established process that we have for this update. We have taken the current city council member handbook and divided it based off of, we've taken it in chunks based off the different chapters. The purpose of the workshop is to receive feedback and direction from the council on changes that you would like to see in the handbook. Ultimately, you will get a final version of the handbook with all of the changes in red line form for approval at a council meeting. This is simply to get again, feedback direction, we can have an open discussion about the different rules, different sections, different procedures. To date, what we have accomplished is significant because we've gone through the first three chapters of the handbook. We have redlined the changes requested by the council, so that's been included as part of your packet. My goal in conducting the remainder of the workshop is is at the council's discretion, but my recommendation is that we focus less on the direction we've already received, but move forward with the two final chapters. Unless there are specific topics, since we last spoke about this many months ago, that the council would like to revisit and we can, we can find the applicable chapter or sections to discuss those particular issues. The other update that I have is that since we last met, as the council will recall, we have had some direction on making changes to the teleconferencing policies that the council had previously established following COVID and the changes in the Brown Act regarding the teleconferencing rules. So in October, the council did approve modifications to your rules. We will be incorporating that, memorialize it in the handbook. And essentially what that is, is it will limit Zoom or teleconferencing capabilities only and will allow the public to provide public comment, but only in those times that a council member is also participating via Zoom remotely. So aside from that, Zoom will be for viewing only. Members who want to provide public comment can do so in person or in written form leading up to the meeting. So that change has not been yet incorporated into the handbook, but it will for your final, for the final version before you approve it. So before we dive into the last two chapters, I do want to confirm with the council that you're okay with process moving forward, or if there's something you want to revisit in the first three chapters. And maybe it would help a refresher on what the original three chapters are. So the first three chapters relate more around the general, general powers and duties associated with council members and the roles. As we established before, we have a table that we provide in the staff report that sets out all the different categories of things that are in the handbook. And there are certain things that were subject to in state law that we don't have flexibility in changing. There are other city-specific administrative procedural rules that we can tinker around with and change. And so we can talk, we can talk about those for any particular item. But I wanted to just remind you that that's the setup that we have for the staff report. Chapter two relates to city council meetings. There weren't a lot of changes associated with that, and that's more along the lines of study sessions, presentations, proclamations. The big item for that one is the council wants to revisit it, if, if you want to revisit it. It's city council referrals and the process by which to do so. So that might be a big one that you may want to.
And that's on chapter three?
As in chapter two.
Real quick, which section refers to the allocated time that we allow? We have five minutes now currently, what section would that be where we allow the?
For public comment?
For public comment, yes, is that chapter?
That's actually, I think in chapter four, that's the one that we'll be covering that.
Okay, we'll get there, okay.
We will be covering that, right. And then chapter three is the decorum chapter. Again, there's not a lot to change in, in that particular chapter because it's subject to provisions and state law. But I do remember telling the council, there was law that was recently adopted that helped clarify the parameters by which you can remove someone or kick someone out of a meeting for disruption. So there's very specific steps that have to be followed in order to do so, that will be incorporated into the handbook. So again, not a lot of changes there as well. So with that, I will turn it over to the council for direction. Do you want to move forward with chapters four and five? Or do you want to go back and revisit one, two, or three?
Bring this back to council, is there anybody who's interested in revisiting the one, two, and three chapters?
I think the referral was the only.
Was the referral, was that hanging in a non-decision at the time?
It, it wasn't what?
So it was our, it wasn't?
So as a reminder on that one, the direction that we got from council was to clarify the process, including the deadline. So may, it might be worth looking into that, so let's go to.
And real quick before, before we move on, I just want to make sure is, are you guys okay with us revisiting that? Yeah, okay, we're good, just want to make sure everybody.
Okay. So if the council will turn its attention to page twelve and thirteen of the handbook. City council referrals, determination for items on the agenda. Based off of the direction that we got from council, moving forward once you adopt this, because again, these rules don't take effect until you formally adopt a new handbook, so this is just in red line form. Now will require that any council member who wishes to place an item on the agenda prior to the posting must bring it to the attention of the city manager by five P M. On the Monday before agendas are posted. The sponsoring council member shall give the city manager a brief description of the subject to be printed on the agenda and the item will be placed in the referral section of the agenda. If the proposed agenda item is received after five P M. At five, every effort will be made to add it to the, add the proposed item to the upcoming agenda. Any items received after the agenda has been posted will be added to the next agenda. So the only change here is trying to encourage efficiency of time. So currently, under our referral section of the agenda, it's twofold. One, you consider the items that have been listed that have already been mentioned or asked to be put on the agenda prior to that meeting. Also, we have, this is the time that the mayor typically asks council members for future referral items. So right now it's twofold. This revision, I think, was intended to help streamline that, to be as efficient as possible. So if a council member feels that there's something they'd like to see on a future referral, if they can get it to the city manager before the, the deadline posting of the agenda, it'll be on the agenda. So we, we can, in an essence, be a little bit quicker about this entire category of topics. That's the only change. The council, if I remember correctly, the discussion on the actual procedures or referral items, didn't want to make any changes, so the, the process still stands. There will be a discussion of the referral item, the sponsoring council member explains their requests, why they're asking for it. The council then opens up for public comment, but you take a, a vote on whether to direct staff to move forward with it. You're not actually approving the item, considering the item itself, it's just whether or not staff resources, city resource should be allocated to that specific request. So that process has not changed. So while we're on that topic, is there any questions, concerns, requested amendments, or discussion on the referral section?
I know that there is very brief, does it specify how many referrals we can have during that time? As if, for example, if, what if we were to bring, we're bringing back five already, and then we're throwing five more, there's no specific limitation for that?
There isn't. You may, may consider that, again, for purposes of efficiency and not having this section on the agenda become too burdensome, maybe, that might be a possibility.
I don't know if the, it's not, I mean, we're not really, we don't always do a lot of referrals.
Right, you're really, you're pretty good about it.
We're, we're pretty decently good, if there was ever a time where maybe, let's just say, two council members have five each, and then we brought back five, we should be at least try to figure out a way where it's consistent to spread it out. So that way we're not focused too much on, on just those, those ten items, we can actually spread them out in multiple agendas. But there has to be a document processed, because I don't, I don't want there to be a referral and then this is to know, to nothing to you, city manager at the moment, but in the past, there's been referrals that never got put on because a month, two months went by and, and they were forgotten. So is there any, so that's two, I guess I'm asking two questions. Should we at least have some kind of a, a rule that suggests that if there's five referrals that are coming from city council members that we have a, a time, if this comes before the city council meeting, it says, okay, you'll, your item will be placed on the second agenda because we already have stacked referrals. And if that is the case, how do we document that? How do we document that, that it even happened? Because maybe one council member might be making a referral, but we don't know that it's happening until maybe I can see seed and hey, this never was placed on the agenda.
I can think of a couple of things. One, you may, you could include a rule that each council member is capped at two, three requests at any given time or any particular agenda. The other thing you may want to do is include a summary, and we can include that maybe as part of the agenda, an attachment to the agenda, which is just a running, running tab of open council referral items with a notation of which council member has referred it and when it was initially referred as a way to keep track of it. Again, it adds another administrative component to it, but it's a suggestion in, in.
Would facilitate, that would be the question?
That would have to be staff.
On the direction of the city manager, any recommendations, if, or suggests such an idea? It's just a way of keeping track of it is what I'm suggesting.
We, we do that now with just staff, you know, keeping track of everything.
Right.
So my, my thought is if each one of you are, you know, capped at five.
Yeah.
Uh, that's twenty-five referrals we're keeping track of and going, trying to bring those forward on top of everything else we're doing with the city, so it's like, okay. You know, how do we prioritize those as they first come first served, or how does that come in? Because as you've said in the past, some were dropped and I, I inadvertently left behind. And I have, I have one piece of paper right now from the council member with eight referrals. And so it's, it's like, okay, we're gonna say four, then fine, and then my question is, okay, how are we going to prioritize that, or you're gonna leave that up to staff to say, okay, we can get this one done, we can move this forward because we're trying to make it work within the confines of the council meeting.
I think it should be left up to the council on what the importance of those referrals are, but maybe at least give us a guide of saying, okay, we have eight, and then we can split it, right? I mean, I think the council would be pretty fair, but I know that, you know, to respect to the Browns Act, we can't specifically say what, what that one or two persons are having referrals, but we can say that we have ten, and we split them. And if maybe one council member has four, one has two, and we go two, two. I mean, as, as a suggestion, but does that need to be in the councils and procedures? Or, or is the council okay with just allowing the city manager to come, and the city clerk to manage that and just kind of give us a heads up?
I, I would say the rule of thumb for a lot of things, if the current process works and you don't think that there's no reason to add rules, just to add rules. So if you think that the current process is working and you don't anticipate having problems, then I would say don't add another specific rule.
I don't see it as a huge problem, I just want to make sure that council members get attention, right? And then you don't get hit with, hey, where's my referral? You and every other council member, and so there's no, there's no back and forth, uh, uh, deception to believe that you're doing something for a reason or advice.
Right.
Generally, generally speaking, the delay or the issue with the timing on the referral items, it's not actually getting the referral on the agenda for the council to consider, because usually the turnaround is the next meeting. It's the caring, if the council says, yes, go, go do that. How quickly can that thing be taken care of and brought back? So the other thing we may, you may want to consider, again, I don't know that it has to be memorialized in this, but it's when the council agrees, that's a, that's, for example, you know, that's a good item, we'd like to see this back, we'd like to see this back in month, is that feasible? And it'd be two months, you know, and have that dynamic in the meeting for staff to provide some feedback if they can at the time.
We, we do that already, I'm, I'll, I'll tell you right now, as far as consistency, I've seen that you've been very consistent with that. Been in previous city managers have not been, it'd been six months and that item never got brought back. But I think it does depend on who's managing that, right? So I think that you've done a decently good job, at least from my perspective. But I, I don't know how I feel about adding multiple rules, it gets so congested that we're, oh, are we breaking the rules, are we on top of this, are we not? Do you guys feel that the way we're doing it now is, is okay besides this one, one thing that says, oh, we got ten referrals, eight referrals, is that? I mean, we want to be respectful to the council members.
Are we adding a numbered cap, or are we gonna keep things how they are? I, I feel like as they are, it works, we, we make our referrals, staff has a phenomenal job of getting them on. I don't think I've seen anybody do an exorbitant amount, I think the most I've seen is, is council member Vera did four, one, one meeting, but are we limiting it or not? I don't, I don't feel like we need to.
Couldn't hear you, I couldn't hear you, Martinez, Rosa Linda, I was not trying to intentionally disregard you, I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't hear two people at the same time. She, she, she had her button pressed. Rosa Linda, you know, I'm not trying to do this on purpose, please do not get upset with me. You know, I've been very consistent in trying to be respectful to you, yeah. Yeah, I said, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. About this, Martinez, do you mind if I give her the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
Obviously upset right now. Rosa Linda, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Well, my concern with this is just the fact that I've brought referrals that have never been put I have asked and emailed according to the guidelines, and it has not been followed through. I have, I'm probably the person with the ten right now that hasn't even made it back to the agenda. So my, I like the idea of setting a deadline for at least return to the agenda, so it's actually seen and brought forward to whether it's gonna even happen or not happen. I think that's my biggest concern right now.
So what you're asking is a number or a timeframe? Like, please be specific.
Well, right now, I just feel like they're completely being ignored, so.
No, no, but I'm asking.
They're not even coming to the, back to the agenda, some of them, so that's my concern right now. Um, I think more of it was under the prior city manager, but even now, some of it is still not returning when I bring it out at the council meetings.
What is your solution, is my question? Would you like, what would you like to recommend so that we can take into consideration?
I think we need to come to way of doing that together, I don't necessarily want to say my way is the best way, but.
I need some suggestions.
I like the deadline, like Nubia had mentioned, it happened on the next month or the next meeting or wherever we're at, as opposed to just it never hitting an agenda at all. Me sending to third reminder, fourth reminder, hey, this is my third request over and over again on email and still getting no responses.
Okay, to, to be fair, I, I believe there's been several, they've came from all council members. That's why I ask, there has to be a way to track them. Currently, what is, what do you have as far as?
Right now, we have, we have eight referrals that have been brought, that we're keeping track of right now.
So is it, is it, okay, go ahead.
Four of them are from council member Vera, three of them have been brought back on October ninth to move forward on it. And we're actually now, one was taking council action on, uh, one didn't no longer apply to, which was the cameras at Independence Park, the citywide yard sale. We've got that on the agenda for January twenty-second. Uh, the crazy downtown streets team, we've been having numerous meetings on that, but that's coming back uh, to council. And then update on repeat development policy is also on the January twenty-second, twenty twenty. I'll have to give us time to research and bring all that back, but that's coming back to you, the one or the two selected.
And that, that's not the part that I'm referring to, that part I understand takes time, it's the part where I say, I would like to say, have our I think our guidelines and policies on housing addressed. And then it goes on to the second agenda for us to all discuss. And that's where I'm seeing the delay, where I say, hey, I would like to see if this is something we can do, and then it's never hitting that second agenda to see if we can get quorum, see if this is something that we want to move forward with, or maybe it's already in the process and we don't need to. And that's where I'm seeing my biggest.
So the, the referral process can be a bit convoluted. I'll be the first to, to say that. So when a council member requests a referral item at the dais, what happens there is council can't take consensus on it at that time because it wasn't agendized beforehand for the public to attend and make comment on it. So it perhaps is in those situations where it looks like it's being redundant because it's brought up at the dais. And two weeks later, it's brought onto an agenda or council consensus where slight discussion may have been had amongst council when it was initially brought up at the dais. But the true discussion and public comment is when it is actually agendized. Because if there's council consensus at the dais, it's not agendized, it's a violation of the Brown Act. So.
Right, I, I don't think that's my issue, my issue is I've brought up referrals and they never make it to that second commenting section to be on the agenda to be a discussion item, so then it's never, it never, it just, it's just a comment that's never moved forward to even be considered, never made it to a council agenda for us to talk about it.
So, Rosa Linda, can I ask a question, I just want to, when you send out these emails, are you putting on the header, this is a referral specifically, I've seen emails that they came in that I've myself have helped you with and I've responded to Doug, can you please look into this? But how can we tell the difference between a referral or just an information request? And, and that's what I want to make sure that, is that maybe why some of these things are not?
These are just things strictly mentioned at a council meeting during the referral comments.
Wait, so, so, so if, if there is a referral that is mentioned during the referral process, they should have documented that, correct?
If it's during the referral process, yes.
During the referral process, not during reports, not during anything else.
Right.
So, that's, I just want to make sure, because I mean, I, I want to do my best to try to help you, Rosa Linda, but I want to make sure that when we're talking about referrals, that we're doing the process the right way. And if maybe you might have made a, a comment where you wanted something to get done during reports and or through emails, but not specify that it is a referral, I don't want that to get lost.
I think there's only once that I put a specific request in for closed-door session to discuss a specific topic and it never made it. That one was just, I didn't even get a response.
I don't see that.
So which one, we, we can.
I don't think we can talk about that, if it was close, if it was close session, there's, we can't talk about that.
No, if we're, we're not, if it's a specific request, we can talk about that offline. We're really only focused on the process, but, so what I, what I'm hearing is that there may be referrals made on the dais or asked for referrals to be made to be added to the future meeting and for whatever reason, it wasn't caught, it wasn't documented, and so we got to the next meeting and it didn't show up on the referral list.
Exactly, thank you.
That's what it sounds like is going on, so I would say maybe, I don't know that that necessarily warrants a rule or a change to the process. We'll just be more diligent about ensuring that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Can we sit there and make sure that referrals are during the referral section? Because sometimes I know during, during regular council proceedings are going on, you go, okay, that, that should be a referral.
It should be a referral.
That may, we may catch that, we may not, because we're sitting there back here doing.
And that's what I want, that's the only thing I was trying to.
If we do it during referral.
Linda is that, I don't want it to get lost because I know that at the end of the day, there are so many things that are said, but if it's on during the referral process, it should be documented. And if we're making comments, at the end of the day, if, even if it's just one individual request, it still needs consensus, unless it's under the referral process, the, they cannot take direction without consensus from the city council.
There's been a blur lately between council communications and referrals.
Or, or, or. Like information requests.
Yes.
Yeah. And all, all I'm trying to do is, is trying to make sure that, that council members are heard because it was an issue in the past from previous city managers, right?
I think maybe something we can do is that at the end of the referral section, we can briefly summarize the information, we, we got three referrals today, A, B, and C. And the mayor can confirm, are we good with that? Are there any additional referrals?
A follow-up email, that CCs to everyone, but no one responds.
Right.
Right.
Except for the person who made those referrals or the referral wasn't caught.
I don't know that, that warrant, yeah, I don't know that that warrants some additional rule or change to handle, but yes, I think.
It's just a procedure.
Right.
And, and the email tells a thousand words, right, CC. So I think that's important that the responses to the city manager, and I would always recommend one council member CC, another council member, just to make sure that both people see it. Uh, Rosa Linda, just going back to you before I go to Daniel Martinez, do you think that's a good solution? Do some of the issues that you say you've been having?
I believe it's a good start.
Starting is better than not starting, okay, Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Mr. City Manager, when we're up here and we make a referral on the dais, who, who keeps track of the referral that was made, yourself or staff? Okay. Yeah, that's all.
Think we're good.
Okay. Okay, so again, that was the only change to that section, so if the council wishes, I'll go back to my original thought of let's focus on chapters four and five moving forward.
I'm okay with that.
Does that sound good?
Council members from left to right. It's like a yes to me.
Okay, perfect. So chapter, chapter four relates specifically, and that'll be page twenty of the handbook, relates specifically to the meeting, the meeting conduct itself. The first thing obviously is the rules refer to the rules, the rules have been established in order to conduct efficient and efficient and orderly meetings. So if we look at the staff reports, page, not numbered, but it's fifth page is so that you can keep track, that's our, that's our chart, so I'll be going through this and, and then the actual handbook itself, so. This is really the process by which we talk about calling the meeting to order, roll call, quorum, those are all things that we don't have much leeway. The, the first one that we have in terms of discretion is the, the format for your public hearings. I, and then that would be page twenty-one. I personally think that the way that we conduct public hearings and appeals currently as set forth is standard. I don't know that there need to be any changes, I can entertain any questions from the council on changes that you may want to make, but this basically, again, the synopsis is you have a staff presentation, there's questions of staff by the council members, the mayor opens up the hearing, opens for public comment, closes it, you come back for discussions, questions, and then action. And essentially, it's the same with appeals. Appeals are a little bit more formal because there's a, you basically, during an appeal hearing itself, you sit as the judge, for lack of a better term, for a particular item, so there's a little bit more of back and forth between the appellate and if there's any, any issues associated with that, but I think that the process that we follow presently is fine. And there, I don't necessarily see any recommendation for changes, but I'll get up to council if you have any questions, comments about that.
Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to time, some, some of our meetings do go long, is it possible that we could allow representatives from our congressional and assembly district the opportunity to speak before we get into our meetings? Since sometimes they are here two or three hours waiting to give us a two-second report and leave.
So in the past, I've, I've actually spoken to them and I told them, you can just speak during public comment. So I made that, because yeah, they, some of them have actually been staying because they found our meetings very interesting, to be honest, yeah. So I, I've, that was about six to seven months ago, I, I seen some representatives in the back and I was, you have to stay for the entire meeting. And one of them was, oh, really, thank you, and the other time they, they returned, they said, no, actually, I want to stay this time. But I think that, would that be okay, we continue to do that, we're just basically allowing them to speak during public comment. Yeah, and then that's, that's, that was who I was speaking about, he sometimes would like to stay, sometimes he can't. I mean, uh, council. Okay, there you go, so, so no worries on that, but thank you for, for bringing that up, Martinez, I would like for them to be waiting. There you go. So so no worries on that. But thank you for for bringing that up, Martinez. I would like for them to be waiting if they didn't have to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I always, all I was going to say is that the way that the process is now is great. And I give that a lot of thanks to our city clerk. And for you guys, for when we have these conversations and preparing these meetings as we had in the past and how we wanted this to flow. I think it's been working out pretty well. I try to do my best to to be persistent and as, not not rushed, but as quick as possible to respect everybody's time and I'll continue to do that. But I think I'm good with with everything that I see here today.
Section G on page twenty-one discusses the mayor sitting as the presiding officer. Um, basic, these are just basic standard rules. There's, I don't know that there's a lot to change or if there's, there's any specific question. Again, this is in the context of the presiding officer for the meeting. So in the event that the the mayor is um unable to attend, the presiding officer is the mayor pro temp, vice mayor.
Right. I think the way it stands, it works out really well. And that also goes for not just on the dais, but also if I weren't in town and resolutions need to be signed, that also gives them the ability to to do that, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
The next section, H, I I would say it's a little bit more of a, it's a, it's a decorum issue as well. I think it's just intended to make sure that it's clear that, you know, once you're recognized as a council member, you have the ability to speak uninterrupted. Um, unless there's, again, a point of order is typically the way that it it would be challenged. Um, so again, that's, again, I don't see much reason for change on that unless the council can think of any specific instances that might raise concerns that you want to change the rules on. The next section uh might be one for the council to consider. This is the speaker card and speaker time category. So this is on page twenty-three. So addressing the council, currently, we have um specific item, you know, time, so ten minutes, so for appallants, they are um when they're asking for consideration of the council to overturn a decision that's been made either by the planning commission or maybe a department head, they're limited to ten minutes. We haven't had many of these recently, so uh not that I can recall. So I don't know that that's so much the issue. It's usually um non-agendized items. So we currently have five-minute.
So let me ask a question. So when you, when you speak on applicants at the planning commission, what if those applicants also came to us? Do we allow them ten minutes or specifically only for planning commission?
This relates specifically to city council meetings. So that's a, that's a much larger topic and and it's, this actually came up a few weeks ago about what whether there's different rules for the planning commission um as opposed to the city council.
They should be the same.
They should be the same. So my, my general recommendation is that, and I I think we have that in here, but I will double check, is that these rules actually be modified to be of greater applicability. So it will apply to the council and to all middies commissions. So I will make sure that that's, that's consistent because that way you have one set of rules that apply to everybody.
Can I ask you a, just a question of from your experience? Is ten minutes still good to keep for for applicants? Is that, I don't think I've ever seen anyone that needed more time.
I don't think I have either. I don't, I don't think I have other. I think it's, it's good to have a set timeframe because the other thing you don't, again, you want efficient meetings.
Yeah.
So whatever information needs to be conveyed, I think ten minutes.
And I have, I have the privilege to allow that person to continue to speak.
You do.
Even past the minutes, which I have done in the past specifically for those who wanted to make their point across when it comes to like these particular items on applications.
Yes.
So I mean, I don't, don't know if I really want to change the ten minutes. Also, are you guys okay with the ten minutes for applicants? I don't find it an issue at all. The only thing I think that we should change, uh, we are one of the last cities in in our area that does five minutes for individual speakers. I think we should go down to three minutes. Ever seen, every other city council that I know of is council, county, is that incorrect?
Yeah, no, I haven't, no.
So that's just my recommendation that we go from five minutes to three minutes. Especially when you have ten, ten folks that are talking on the same subject. I usually allow them to speak. I know there's sometimes I'm, I had my preview, I could tell them that we've already spoke on that item, but I like to have a lot of people to speak, but just the minutes is my recommendation. We go from five to three.
Mr. Mayor, can I get clarification on something?
We'll see one more time.
Uh, can I get clarification on?
Oh, yeah, go ahead before we move on to that.
Nubia?
Yes.
When uh during the times when he, somebody's speaking three or five minutes, if the mayor allows that person to speak longer, let's say five minutes, that opens it up to five minutes for everybody else to speak at night. Is that correct?
Yes. So that was actually something I was just thinking that we may want to clarify in the handbook is that, because it works both ways. There may be times where you have um a really massive agenda or a really hot button topic where the room is packed.
Right.
You have, the council has a discretion to limit public comment as long as it's consistent and applied to everybody. So if that decision is made, we may, or if you, if you want, it may be good to have some rules in here that specifically say that the council may, you know, on a majority vote, um, or at the discretion of the chair, limit public comment on an agenda, on on the agenda period to a certain number of minutes to reduce it. And then also to memorialize that if, if additional time is given to one particular member, then it should apply to everybody.
I would recommend as the chair that you guys give me the responsibility to dictate that because there might be times where you have a lot of folks, and there might be times where you have one person and we might just allow that person to speak a little bit over what they'll all, all the time. But I I want to make sure that I have the ability as the meeting is moving, that I can either A, allow that person to speak a little bit longer or just keep it tight and stick to the, to my recommended three minutes. And that's typically as a chair that I've done in other committees like Stan Cog, those kind of places. I I don't know how the council feels about that. I think that if there's times where the council has made recommendations, you know, let's take a recess and I'm going to obviously hear, hear, they, hear them out. Um, but that's, that's my recommendation.
I'm fine with it like it is. I don't think we have, we seldom have a problem with so many speakers that we shouldn't limit them to three minutes. I'm fine with it like it is.
Okay, we have Mr. Martinez.
I'd like to keep it as it is as well.
You would like to revisit? Keep it the same? Okay. Rosalinda?
I as well like to keep it the same. I think we shouldn't, even if there's a lot of people, I don't think they should be limited on their speaking time because there's a lot of them. It needs to be pretty consistent.
Just keep it the same.
Okay, so I'm hearing.
They're all saying basically, keep it the same.
Everything the same, including the five, don't change the times, don't change anything to this language.
Nothing. That means that even when I'm, even when there is a lot of folks that I, should I be allowed to bring it down or or can, that's, that's my question because that's not in, that's not in the, in the rule at the moment.
Right. And that's why I suggested that as a possibility.
Inconsistent, I have not, uh, I have not lowered the time. I know I've given people additional time, but if I do give people additional time, it has to be across the board, right?
Yes.
And also, on top of that, I've done a really good job when sometimes when we're having issues with the time clock, I'll keep time here. So I don't want people to think that that they're not being clocked, right? So I want to make sure that we, we are very specific on that. I can, we can just have that line of communication. Oh, I have five minutes on this side. I know that they're, they're paying attention to the clock as they're looking up there. Um, Mr. Casey, you have pressed his button. Mr. Casey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. I I think the, the issue at the time is when you enter into discussion with this person that's making the presentation, my, you know, I don't have any problem leaving everything the way it is, but that, that's what happens is somebody is making a presentation and then you, you are one of the other council members ask, ask the question instead of just taking into consideration what they've said, instead of entering into it. Well, that, that, that's what drives the, that's what creates the problem is that when they're allowed five minutes and they're almost done and and we ask them a question, then five minutes is out of, out of order. Yeah, go ahead.
Technically, that clock, that stop clock, stopwatch should stop during that time for them, for us to an, ask the question, for them to answer, and then they should be able to finish their five minutes.
Which I have done in the past. Yeah. And I try to do my best to make sure that, and and I've done it on record. Uh, please stop the clock. I've said that many times. And I think that's important.
And I would say that that's the exception because typically, so the distinction here is if it's a staff report, a consultant who's presenting, there is no time limit for their presentation. And so you have the ability to ask questions, it's a little bit more back and forth. This really relates to the public or appallants. And when that happens, for the most part, there's not as much back and forth unless it's truly an appeal or an applicant. You get that more in the planning commission context because they're actually considering direct applications and approvals for things. The council, generally speaking, you hear it on appeal, meaning if someone's not happy with a decision made by someone else, you generally get that. So it, they'll be, just naturally based on the subject matter, you won't see a lot of that.
Of course.
And to Vice Mayor's point, that's correct. If it turns into a little bit more of a back and forth or asking questions of the speaker, that really should not be counted against their time.
Correct. And that's what you were referring to, right, Casey? That shouldn't be counted, which it does not at the moment. Okay. And Martinez, you had the floor.
Nubia, I just wanted to clarify, the mayor, uh, we we did decide to keep it as is, but the mayor still has the ability to see a full room and ask for permission from the council for consensus to limit the number from five to three, or is that something we would need to add right now?
The default right now is, and and this is standard, what I'll call standard Roberts rules, Rosenberg rules, however you want to look at it. The standard is the chair has the ability to um to lower the limit. If you, that's the default. Whether that's codified in here, I can't, I don't remember off the top of my head, but if you want to make a change to that, then I would recommend making a change to the handbook because that's the default. And again, the rule is if you're going, you can do it, it just has to apply across the board.
Mr. Mayor, is that something that we can add to the rules that you do have that power to, if the room is full for a certain item, limit the number from five to three? That way it's, it's in the procedures and we know.
Yeah, that's why I've never actually done that. I mean, we've had long, long meetings and I want to be respectful to everybody's time. I think that it would be a conversation. I wouldn't just do it, just to do it, you know. I I think that if there is at least a consensus in my, it's just the way I run my meetings. I I I know that there's times where some other chairs will just
Right.
do as they wish, which I am sure I have that ability, but I think that is to the respect of my council member's time. If you want to, if if the council is okay with that, you know, the flexibility with the least consensus.
So Nubia?
Respect that.
Nubia, adding that provision, is that something I'd have to motion now or do we?
This is, this is a workshop. So as long as I get a consensus, the the majority of you agree with that, and I am getting the sense that that's probably going to be okay, we'll go ahead and add it.
Okay.
Is that consensus across the board?
Does that sound good to the council?
Those are just.
So, so the, the, the revision would be that the mayor, the presiding chair with consensus of the council may lower the time speaking limit in the event of a full agenda or in potential impacts to the schedule. But again, this has to, this should be done at the beginning of the, of the meeting.
Meeting.
And just to clarify, you said chairs, meaning that if uh the mayor is gone and Vice Mr. Rivera had to fill in, he would still have that ability.
Presiding chair, yes. And that's why I want to use that verbage. It's the.
Rosalinda has the floor. Nubia?
Mr. Mayor, so when does that occur?
That would occur.
Earlier in the, the agenda, when does that occur exactly?
Example. Go to the agenda. It would be early on in the agenda, basically after like a roll call, before you get into, because again, this is likely going to be, because it has to apply from the beginning. So you've got to do it at the beginning. And it's likely going to be in a cer- a circumstance where you see a packed room and there's, you know, eighty people, I mean, as an example, like.
I I do have a comment, but I'm not allowed, uh, Rosalinda to speak.
I think she's kind of on the same brainwave where I'm at. Um, it's just, I know we have some hot topics coming forward, so I just want to make sure that we have at least a clear understanding of what we're going to do when those, whether it's here, also planning commission, I know entire street said they were going to be coming out when another topic hits the planning commission. So I just want to make sure we have those policies outlined in place such as if there's ten people that have turned in yellow cards to speak on a topic, it'll automatically be rolled that we don't even necessarily need to even roll. So we've already had that, such as an upcoming, happened at a recent planning commission meeting. So that's, I think more of my concern is just, it's already laid out. We don't even have to necessarily discuss that if that's already in place. And then I agree that we do need to be respectful of everyone's time. And we have that clearly lined out as well. I don't want to limit people's right to speak at the same time either. So I'm kind of in mix and just making sure we have clear, fine, fine definitions.
Do you mind if I try to, I think that you should, everybody should at least give the chair the flexibility, be, even if you receive ten cards, you'll have ten people out there who did not turn in ten cards. We're not enforcing the ten cards. And if I see that, the only thing I would ask is, is this in reference to the topic? If we're in, if we're in citizens communications, if we're in on on a particular talk, topic, item on the agenda, and we have ten, fifteen people that are getting ready to, to speak, then I think you, everybody should give the flexibility to myself as a chair. And then I can even talk to the council in regards to if we want to limit the time. I've never done that before.
Right.
Biggest crowd that we had was when we had the fire contract. And we were here till midnight. I wanted everybody to get an opportunity to speak. It was an important topic.
So what I'm hearing is there may be some concerns about lowering the threshold time for speaking. But this would be a rare occasion, again, but that, that's you. And and you're establishing.
That's what I'm hoping.
Right. And you're establishing rules for councils moving forward. Future councils may change it, but one recommendation that I'd have is, is something to the effect of following the roll call and before citizen communications, the presiding chair may, upon consensus of the council, reduce the time speaking limit based off of a determination that there will be impacts to the meeting um if the five minutes words stand. So something along those lines. Again.
I'm okay with that.
The presiding chair will, will ask for a consensus, the can, the council will, there will have to be at least three of you to, and under normal circumstances to say, okay, and you would do that right before public comm- comment portion starts of the meeting.
I like that.
Does that, does that sound like a, a good option?
I'm okay with that. And I know, Brett, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I don't support shortening it to three minutes at any point. Our citizens have a very few opportunities to speak to us, and I think we should give them those full opportunities. And also, didn't you say that this is already included in the Roberts or Rosenberg rules of order, and we wouldn't need to specifically put this in our annual?
The default generally is that your presiding chair, your presiding chair can, can reduce it. To council member Martinez's point, he wants it actually in the rules so that we're clear. Meaning, and 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 his recommendation is upon consensus of the council. So right now, the default is the presiding chair can make that determination. He's asking for more buy-in from the rest of the council on, on whether to limit that. Again, the opposite of this could be you could put in the rules, we will never shorten the time ever. That, that, that could be the opposite as well.
And I've never done it before, so let's just be clear. I've never, I don't, I never found the need to do it. I, if there ever arises an occasion, it's all it is in respects to the time to the council and the citizens that come here to speak.
So to what currently is on the table for, I I just need a consensus on whether you want this or not. To per, give the presiding chair the option to present to the council on consensus, and it has to be with a consensus of the council to shorten, to shorten the time for public comment at any given meeting based off of the circumstances of that meeting. I can, I can work with the language, but just the concept of the council feels comfortable with that concept. If you don't feel comfortable with the concept, then default is the mayor, whoever's presiding chair can, can do it. So.
That, that is a suggestion. Martinez?
I, I already supported, I think she needs to get consensus. It's one yes for me and one no from the vice mayor.
Vice mayor, no. Myself, yes. Rosalinda?
I'm with the vice mayor. I don't think we should comment.
Okay.
Council member Casey then with the tiebreaker.
Floor is yours.
Tiebreaker.
So you, you have the authority.
If you, if you don't change it now, which is the recommendation.
All of us. That, that's the question before.
I was trying to explain, Brett, that if you don't change it now, as in Martinez's suggestion, I have the ability and my discretion to lower the time. Martinez's suggestion, I have the ability and my discretion to lower the time. What I'm saying is that if we, if we go with Martinez's suggestion. Then I have to have consensus to lower the time. Almost like I'm kind of stripping myself a little bit of.
Checks and balances.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty much. So. So right now it's a tie, so I, I need, I need council member.
Oh, yeah, so. If you, if you say that, if you're okay with what Councilmember Martinez says, that means that we all have to. So he's okay with just me making the decision. So that would be, he's aligned with the. Vice Mayor and Rose Linda.
Okay, so.
Leave it as it is.
So right now, we'll just leave it as it is.
Okay.
No changes.
All right. Thank you, thank you. I told everyone this is going to be fun, so.
From a, from a practical standpoint to the mayor's point, this is rare. It's very rare that I, I think you would ever really need to employ that. Again, my only concern from a Brown Act standpoint and First Amendment standpoint is that whatever the rules are, have to apply to everybody for the rest of the meeting.
Yes, and that's where City Clerk and I will be looking at each other with five minutes, man. Thank you.
Perfect. The, the next section, the next couple ones are. Address, you know, the back and forth and addressing of comments. I think this, this goes without saying, I don't know that you necessarily may need to make any changes, but it's. Only one person can speak at one time for all, you know, host of reasons, for decorum, for consideration and clarity. I think the biggest issue frankly lately has been the audio in the room. And it's, it can be jumbled already enough as it is, so if people are speaking over each other, it just makes it worse. Comments, questions from the public have to be limited to the subject matter under consideration. That's pretty standard. I don't know that there's much to change there. Addressing the council after a motion is made. Once, once public comment is closed, and the mayor has closed public comment, then it's just an internal discussion amongst the council members and staff. So I don't know that there needs to be any changes to this either. Um, the next, the next few are regarding continuing agenda items. That's pretty standard. We have very specific rules for that, and that's also governed by the Brown Act. Public hearing closed, same, same comment. And I don't know that there's much to change there. The. Voting. Must be, and this is required by, by state law, so all votes must be made by roll call, results shall be announced and recorded in the minutes, and that's handled by the city clerk, so there haven't been any issues there. So those are, those are pretty, pretty standard. Um, if you look at page twenty-five. This is, this one might be one for clarification. When you fail to vote. Well, the default is you as a council member. Have the ability, right obligation, whichever way you want to look at it as voting on an item, on, on, voting on an item. The current rules state failure to vote that is not compelled by illegal disqualification, meaning a conflict. Shall not, shall constitute an affirmative vote. A council member who fails to vote shall nonetheless be counted towards making up a quorum unless the failure to vote is compelled by illegal disqualification. The, the, the basic summary of this is if you do not vote. It will be counted as a yes vote on that item. Change you can make if you want, but that's the rule. Yes.
It's just saying if you try to abstain and you're on the dice and you don't vote.
So.
That what you're saying?
Basically, you can vote yes, no.
Correct.
You can recuse yourself, um, based off of a, a conflict or a whatever. You're just basically, you can, you can recuse yourself. When you recuse yourself, that's, that's where you get up and walk out. You can abstain from a vote. Um, which in essence is the same as, as saying, um. I, you know, I may, I may be personally conflicted. I don't have a, like a, a technical conflict of interest, but I just don't. Want to vote on it. That's a personal decision to you whether you should do that or not. But that takes you, that, that, that means you're not voting yes or no. This rule applies to situations where you're silent. That's not so much an issue because we do roll call votes, and that, that law was changed a few years ago requiring roll call votes. I have had in the, this was in the past. Councils where it would say, you know, if you're, uh, all the ayes, all the nays. And, and you wouldn't necessarily hear a vote from all the council members. And so it was like, looking back, it always happens, looking back, it's, well, council member X, what did, what did that council member vote? That council member didn't say anything. That's where this rule comes into place. I don't know that it's, um. That, we need a change because again, we do a roll call vote, so we'll get, we'll get an answer out of you one way or the other. Either yes, no, or you're abstaining. Because if, but if you're silent, it will be considered a yes vote.
No, I don't want to change it. We, I've never had an issue here as long as I've been the mayor. Everyone's been firm on their vote, yes or no.
Tie votes. All tie votes shall be deemed to be a denial of the matter, and that, that's standard. I don't actually think we can't change that. Under the.
Said that, oh, a typo may be what?
It, it fails. So if, so let's say for example, you, there's four of you and not five of you, and two vote yes and two vote no, that item fails.
Tie vote. I thought you said typo. I apologize.
Typhoon.
Mr. Casey, you have the floor.
Right, I have a question. So it says in there that, uh. We can decide not to vote on it also. Would that, that would be done before the tie vote? Am I, am I reading that wrong?
Yes, so if you, if you abstain or if you recuse yourself on an item. Right?
No, no, that's not my question. Doesn't it say here that the, the council can elect to continue the matter to the next meeting? So. If there's a reason to believe that it's going to be a tie vote, can, can the council member, before the vote is taken. Refer it to the next meeting?
Okay, so you're, okay, you're, you're speaking of in a situation where. It looks like the item is not going to pass.
Right.
When and where could you make a motion to continue the item for further discussion or clarification? So here's the rule, when you make a motion and there's a second, you're supposed to take the vote.
Right, so before that, that takes place, is that when, isn't that what this says here that. By majority vote, the members present may elect to continue the matter to the next meeting.
Unless the council by majority vote, yes, elect to continue the matter. So. I, I think it makes sense that before the vote is taken, you stop and. And ask for clarification. And. At that point, this is the problem, is that once you make, once you make the motion, you're supposed to, you're, you're supposed to take the vote. The only way you can do that procedurally is to have the council member who makes the motion in the first place rescind their, withdraw their motion.
Well, it can happen.
What if the presiding officer calls for a motion, and a council member speaks up before the motion is made? And say, why don't we just continue this to the next meeting?
You can do that, but once the vote is basically locked in with a second, you are supposed to move forward with the vote. Technically, the only way to rescind that is the withdrawal of a motion, and that's actually on page twenty-four. A motion may not, well, well, this is interesting. A motion may not be withdrawn by the maker of the motion without the consent of the council member who seconded the motion. So let's do it, it's a good time for a hypothetical. Let's assume there's a vote to. Take a particular action. The vice mayor makes a motion to. Vote yes on the item. Councilmember Martinez is seconded. The mayor is absent, let's say for intents and purposes, so that we, we have a good hypothetical here. Based off of discussion, Councilmember Viera and Councilmember Casey are going to say no on this. And so there is, the vote's locked in. You're supposed to move forward with the vote. The only way that that vote, that the motion can be rescinded is if both the vice mayor and councilmember Martinez agree to. Withdraw the vote, and then someone can make a new motion to continue the item.
Uh, e- earlier in the document, it, it said something different than that. It said that. The person who made the motion can withdraw it and made the second, doesn't have to participate. Earlier at this document, it says that.
No, I, I think what it says was. First person who makes the motion cannot withdraw it without the permission from the second person who seconded it. The second person has to agree to it, then they can do it, yes.
So in my hypothetical, the only way that the motion can be withdrawn is if both of them agree.
But once a vote starts, it has to be.
It has, it has to continue.
Say Daniel and I both agree to withdraw the motion, then any of us then can say, I'll, I'll now move to. Uh, table this to a later meeting.
You can't do that.
And we can have another second and vote on that. But once, if we don't withdraw that motion, it's going to go to a vote. And if it's two to two, because there's only four people here.
And then motion failed.
Recently.
Right, I know.
Apparently when I wasn't here, then it's, that's stuck. Stuck with that. And I, I only see that in one place, Jim. I'm not sure where you saw that listed differently. Reading it, it, it says, that's what I read, that it says that. Both the motion maker and the second have to withdraw.
And the basic idea behind this is consistency, and. Once you, once you've bought into this idea that we're following these rules. It helps eliminate confusion and maybe flip flopping on things, kind of going back and forth. Once it's locked in, you have to move for a vote. If the person making it or seconding it say, you know, maybe there's an alternative we should look at, they're the only ones who can make that call. Again, but, so, so those are typical rules. I don't see any reason for changing them, but that, again, I brought it up just for the council. It, it, it's a good opportunity to just revisit the rules.
I'm okay with it, the way it sits.
Or, you all generally okay with that?
You're okay with it.
What, what this all stemmed from was the original discussion of if you don't vote. Um, it, it counts as a yes. So that, that rule will stand unless the council wants to change it. The next rule is the big, the big caveat to all of this, which basic, what you're basically adopting, what you have adopted. Is what we've deemed Rosenberg's rules of order. So Rosenberg's rules of order were designed for public agencies. They're a modification of Roberts rules. Roberts rules of order, if you follow them to the letter. Are cumbersome and complicated because you can't even. Um, you, you have to make a motion almost for every little thing that you do. You have to use formal language like the requests, you know, you have to request, um, acknowledgement. In, in order to speak, and then the, the person giving it has to then make a statement like, I acknowledge this person, I know. It's very formulaic and it kind of takes away from the flow of the meeting. So that's why we use Ro- Rosenberg's rules of order. But this rule basically says that if you don't follow these rules to a T, it's okay. It's, it's about encouraging a, a process. And, and I would say that to the largest extent possible. The important thing is just being consistent and making sure that the public has an opportunity to provide their comment. Making sure that motions and votes are clear for the record, and then you'll be fine. But again, it's.
Okay.
Put it this way, it's not your, it shouldn't be your responsibility to make sure that you're following the strict parliamentary rules. That's my job. So I have to make sure that I'm keeping you all on track.
So, so you're okay with my, my questions and the council's questions? I was asking you to double check.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because sometimes.
Because sometimes I may, may have to refer to the rules, because I don't know it off the top of my.
There is times where. Feel like I'm right, and I want the public to understand that what I'm saying is correct, so that's why I always refer to you.
That's perfectly fine.
Mr. Mayor, the floor is yours.
I have a question. Now that we don't number our resolutions on the agenda, what would we, because there's been a little bit of confusion I noticed from the. From the public on sometimes what we're talking about when they're turning to speak on that certain item is. What would you suggest when the mayor or one of us reads that resolution? It was easy before, it was resolution number twenty-two-three XYZ. What do we, what should we do now? How should we differentiate those in the meeting? Because I understand, completely understand why we're not putting a, a number to it now. What should we do? Because there's a little bit of confusion when it comes to that.
Refer to the item number on the agenda. Can I, can I add to that?
That's what we've been doing, vote yes on number twelve or whatever. That just seems pretty, maybe too simple, but maybe that is the best thing. And what's, what's done in other areas?
In other jurisdictions?
Do you mind if I add to that real quick? I don't say the resolution anymore. Do I need to worry about saying that? Sometimes I'll say it just because I'm trying to, trying to be consistent.
Like maybe you could say, and now number three on the agenda, and then read what the whole thing is instead of.
Currently, I'll say, moving on to unfinished business, item number one. Councils and procedures, resolution number. And I don't normally say the number.
So you don't have to say the number. I think I spoke about this with Councilmember Martinez. What other jurisdictions do? It's just clunky. It's next in number. It's resolution next in number. Meaning that you would say, because it's a placeholder. And, and, and I think that's a good practice that we have placeholders because it makes staff's life so much easier. They don't have to worry about renumbering it after the fact and numbers could change. So you can say resolution next in number. But you don't have to do that. I think the easiest way is a resolution, a resolution, a motion to adopt a resolution. And then you read the rest of the title, because the rest of the title will tell you what it does. The resolution, adopting, approving XYZ. It's an ordinance. Motion to adopt an ordinance, making changes to XYZ in the code, adopting a development agreement, et cetera. So it, that's why your agenda titles are your shortcut. That's when in doubt, use the words right after, right after the resolution or ordinance, because that tells you everything you need to know.
When we're talking about consent calendar items, it's pretty simple. We use the numbers.
Yeah, we do.
And then we get, after the consent, we don't, some, a lot of times. So should we just use the numbers?
You can do that too.
Go from number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen on the agenda.
So let me say that when I'm on unfinished business, item number one. And then I say resolution number. So what I could say is, item number one. Resolution number, and then what was the suggestion you said? It was a.
Next in number.
Next in number, which we can put in on our notes, next in number, and then I say what the resolution is.
You cannot say that at all, too. You don't have to say resolution number.
Not say that at all.
That's what I'm saying, not saying resolution number at all.
Yeah.
I don't want.
Resolution to adopt, to amend.
Resolution to adopt, yeah.
Ignore the, ignore the X's.
Yeah, ignore the X's. But I want the, the, the crowd to understand that we're on that item. Item number one. Which I've been doing, item number one, except for the exception, I've been, sometimes I'll read the double zero, sometimes I'll leave it out.
Yeah, I think once we cleared up the issue with the placeholders, the one time it came up a few meetings ago, I think it's been fine since then. But yes, technically, we want to be form, again, but it's the formality, you can get lost in the formality. And people get confused, like, why, why are you saying words that don't naturally go together? Resolution next in number, but you could.
Especially if it's new. They'll look at us like, okay, all of a sudden there's changes. Well, actually, that's what we're doing with the council procedures. So as is. This will specify in this here that the way I say will be item number. Resolution to approve. And then the resolution. So for them, when they do.
Yeah.
Okay. Like it. And to my right, are we okay with that?
The next section. Is a written form of everything we've talked about, about announcing the item, reporting questions, public comments, and the motion. This is just the order. I'm page, I'm on page twenty-six. It's just the order that things, that things happen. I don't see any reason for changing. It, the big thing is. You're really good about it. I have seen other council, councils not be great about it. Is that there, um, seems to be discussion after, extensive discussion after a vote is actually taken. The discussion should always come before. Once the vote is done, the city clerk should announce the results, and then you move on. For the most part, you, you've all done really good. And then the next, the next couple pages, the same thing. It's just an example of all the different motions that you can make. Most of these don't typically. Uh, apply, but it's, you know, if you want to amend your, your motion, if you want to substitute the motion, you want to adjourn, and things like that. But again, these are a motion to limit debate. Typically, it stops debate on the item and in effect calls for a vote. So this might come in play when it's going, the, the meeting is just going way too long, or the discussion is not focused. Um, you may have somebody say, I think it's time for a vote. I'm going to make a motion to. Um, limit debate until we can, we can take a vote now. I've never seen that happen. I don't think you need it. You've all been really good about it. But again, these rules are in place, not just for. I've never seen that happen. I don't think you need it. You've all been really good about it. But again, these rules are in place, not just for you, but it's for the future. And so that's why they're, they're listed here.
Nubia, Martinez, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, before we start chapter five, would it be possible to take a brief three-minute recess?
If you need to use the restroom, yes, sir. I'm in a recess.
Was that a motion to limit debate?
Right here.
We are on, and welcome back, everybody. We're now in session. Back to what we were saying.
After our motion for recess, um, we're now at our final chapter, chapter five. This relates to boards, commissions and committees, and city representative and standing committees. It's a very short chapter. The big thing here to, for the council to consider is, do you want to make changes to how boards, commissions and committees are appointed? Right now, the rule is that all members of boards, commissions and committees, except council members, shall be appointed by the mayor with the confirmation of the city council. And we have a whole process set forth. So, um, I know historically, we have the committee list. Fallon, we normally publish that, was it December, January?
January.
January, um, for upcoming vacancies, then that's when the creation of the subcommittees and interview committees are, are done. Um, so that's, that's that process. I don't, I can't think in, in recent months, any, the only question was, was it at the last council meeting that there was an appointment and there was a question about opening it up to the public before? Um, or just reappointing. So that might be something the council may want to consider adding. Because what the current process is, there is a list of applicants that is established every year. They're then considered for various vacancies and depending on that, then that's why we bring it to you. Seems to be an efficient process. If you want to change that or open up noticing for a vacancy, we'd have to make a change to the rule.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and give Rosalind to the floor.
I'm, I'm guess there's two. One was regarding, um, if it's in this section regarding making sure it's the same policies and procedures as council. It's at one of the committee meetings, again, we had someone who declared conflict but continued to comment during the process and became very argumentative with anyone that came against their position, even though they had already declared a conflict. Um, so I don't know, I think this was the area I was told it needed to be put in, as well as absences and lack of decorum. We had a lot of meetings canceled over the summer on our planning commission because of lack of quorum. So I just want to see if we can make sure that they have a similar attendance policy requirements as we have here on council. And if this is the area where it needs to go.
So two things, she's referring to quorum.
Right.
Quorum check, which we have rules for quorum, right? And if we're absent, is the planning commission and the other committees, are they bound by the same rule? They should be.
They should be, so.
If it's not in here, we need to put it in.
We will put that in here. I'm not sure if it would go here, but I'll make sure that it goes somewhere in the co, in the, in the handbook. Again, my, my overarching, uh, change that I want to make is to make it clear that everybody's subject to these rules. So as to the first point, because I remember that, I remember the specific, uh, incident that you told me about. It's good for everybody to know, because that is, that specific committee was more of like an ad hoc committee. But it's good to put in these rules and good for everyone to know that if you're ever appointed to an, a committee of that nature, you're still subject to all the rules. So if you've basically declared a conflict, you really shouldn't be participating and you need to step out of the room. And so we'll make sure that that gets in here. And as to the quorum issue, it should apply across the board. So I'll make sure that the, the overhaul of this makes clear that it's everybody.
Wh- so, just going back to quorum. Vacancies, there you go, vacancies. Thank you. I was just thinking. And I'll go back to Martinez, unless you were gonna talk about vacancies. Okay, so if, for example, we have commissioners that are, and I, and I hope that these commissioners can kind of tell me how it works. So you got commissioners, not myself. If, uh, if there is a time where you guys can't make it on a very important matter, obviously, the, everyone has the right to determine whether they're, how they, would they show up. Is there a, a number of times commissioners were told that they had to be at meetings? That's my question. And would, do you guys think, just because I want you guys kind of opinion, that that would help to encourage commissioners to attend meetings if they were told that if you do not attend X amount of meetings, you will have to reconsider your, your appointment on the commission?
So I, I can't speak for the vice mayor, but I never missed a planning commission meeting. And there was never like a formal pay, i- if you miss three, you're out sort of training beforehand.
Okay, there was.
I, I don't believe there is anything in place for that currently.
I'm reading it now. Okay, there's nothing in place. We're, uh, I'm sorry, I was just a follow-up question.
So two, maybe two things.
Okay.
For clarification, one, you can, as a council, you can set the attendance rules for your committees.
Okay.
You cannot set the attend, you can set the attendance rules to a certain extent for yourselves, because that's governed by state law. So I believe it's if there's a consecutive missing of sixty days worth of meetings, then by law, I think you'd be, of unexcused absences on council, you will have been deemed to have vacated your seat. Again, so it's more than sixty days. I believe, don't quote me on this, but it's, I think it's sixty days and unexcused. So it's, that's always why it's important for, to be in communication with, with the mayor, with the city manager of potential absences. Now, for committees, the other place I need to check is the municipal code. Because sometimes there's rules about attendance for committees and commissions. The code. So give me a second, I'll take a look at that.
And while you do that, Martinez, do you want to?
Uh, I'll wait, because my, my question was, was for Nubia.
Then let's just wait, when she.
That's, that's the other. It's, what we currently have is for your term. If someone is appointed to fill in an expired term, they may serve the remainder of the next term's terms and duties. Compensation, removal. If the members of the plan, so this is planning commission specific. The members of the planning commission shall automatically be removed from the planning commission if they miss two consecutive regularly scheduled meetings, except in the event of illness or absence excused by the chairman with the concurrent.
Does that include lack of quorum?
Well, it's two separate things.
So for example, if there's no quorum, then there's no meeting.
Correct.
But if there was a scheduled meeting and they still don't show up.
I see what you're saying. So if, so I think it's of actual meetings. I, I don't know that you can hold an, and you can't hold an absence that would have otherwise happened against someone if there was, just wasn't, unless they come. Yeah, if others can't be there now.
Be a lack of quorum.
Yeah.
Now, Rosalind is just asking meetings are being canceled because of lack of quorum.
Right.
Right.
But I think, to, to that point, you have people missing meetings. It creates a, so they're creating a lack of a quorum in and of itself. Here's the thing. These commissioners are always subject, this is a, this is a shell, like it's this automatic. The council always has the ability to remove commissioners to your discretion. So if it becomes, if it, it becomes a problem that needs to be addressed, there's other mechanisms by which you can handle that.
I would like it that whoever is, are at these meetings, this from staff report back to the council, attendance record, if it becomes an issue, issue if they deem to be, is become an issue. Because maybe at, at this point, it's not an issue, because maybe nobody's ever said anything before.
Right.
And if they're just not showing up and we're not having these meetings of, if they are, I don't know if they are or not, that we should at least have some checks and balances there.
Yeah, there, there are, there are things that by statute have to be resol- hearings that have to be held, maybe within a certain timeframe. Technically, the planning commission meets twice a month on the books. They don't always meet twice a month, and sometimes, as you recall, just things can get lumped together, and so we don't have to have two meetings all the time. So that, that's, you know, probably the exception. Um, but if it's a consistent problem, that the lack, the, their inability to attend the meetings, creating a quorum issue, I think that's probably, you just need that flexibility to have um, your community development, uh, department communicate that, coordinate that directly with the, the city manager to bring it to his or her attention to them.
What if it's missed? What if the city manager's not fully aware of that? Should the city manager have the ability? Do you check? Is my question, I guess. You check, see if there's, unless it's brought to your attention, you probably wouldn't, right?
So yeah, so if there's a cancellation on a planning commission due to the lack of quorum, then yeah, we'll be able, I should be aware of it. But we should start tracking that, uh, for, go set the rules down and say, because of lack of quorum, and start tracking who's causing this lack of quorum. And bring that back to council and, and necessary recommendations.
So I'm, I'm looking at the code to make sure it's consistent. Any member of a board commissioner committee may be removed without cause by a vote of not less than three council members initiated by either the mayor or a council member. Any proposed removal shall be scheduled as a council referral on the agenda of a regular city council meeting with the names of the person proposed to be removed. So that's, that is consistent.
It's there.
So that's the rule.
That is the rule. It's there. If we ever have, if it ever gets brought to our attention, then I guess it's there. So it's fair that it's there. I'm okay with that.
Um, as long as it's being enforced, I guess, is my biggest issue, because, um, from my understanding from a recent meeting I was at, a CUP was gonna be delayed because of lack of quorum at an upcoming meeting, and it was gonna have to wait until December um, on their thirty day, whenever waiting for response. So I know it's an issue just from attending a meeting um, and the amount of public that was here for that discussion, um, regarding that CUP. So I, um, I know it's an issue, and I know, I think we canceled most of July and August meetings because of lack of quorum, again, because of vacations. Um, so to me, that's delaying our development and other issues that we have in town. That makes, that creates an issue for me, so I make sure it's addressed. And they're aware that they also have attendance, um, requirements that I would like them to meet as well as myself.
Is it safe to say, council, that we have Doug, just take a look six months back and just see what we're actually looking at? Oh yeah, but he has, I mean, there has to be, actually, he has to look at everything.
Yeah, well, we'll look at the attendance record for all the, uh, planning commissioners and then bring that back.
Okay with everyone? And now, now we'll go back to Mr. Martinez. My apologies that we kind of diverted a little bit. Uh, floor is yours, Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have a recommendation of the council. Uh, myself and, uh, councilmember Vieira were on the food truck committee. We had two meetings. Uh, at both meetings, legal issues came up where we didn't have, um, representation from the attorney's office. So I would like to suggest that when we have, uh, committees and meetings involving city ordinances and recommendations, that we have representation from the city attorney's office. Uh, that we put that in the rules, that there needs to be perhaps not Nubia but a representative there. Uh, we both meetings for the food truck issue, we had, we had issues that, that came up and there was no uh, representation there to bounce ideas or ask questions, and then to make sure that we were on track legally. So that, that would be my recommendation to the council, that we have representation from the city attorney's office.
But if it's upon request? I make it, not make it a set rule. We're talking about ad hoc now.
Planning commission's been asking the same thing for the last couple of months. They've been asking for.
Yes, sir.
Presentation at their meetings as well.
And I did, uh, request representation for the second meeting, and, and there was nobody, uh, available to attend.
Thought we had, uh, someone.
We do, we do have someone from our office always attend, uh, planning commission meetings. We're, we haven't been there in person. Um, so that, that is more of a, it administered because Zoom, so basically post-COVID, we have always attended the meetings. And that was at the request of the previous two.
Oh, we got you.
City managers that we don't.
Oh, we got you.
Yes, Nubia was my city attorney when I was on the planning commission.
That's how we know each other.
Yeah.
So, so I'll make sure that that continues, but that's standard. So for planning commission, the default is we attend either in person or on Zoom.
Major, major H is also asking for returning.
Okay, so the, so upon, upon request.
Upon request.
Now, let's, let's make sure that everyone who's asking, who doesn't already have it, do that, especially measure H. And I just want to make sure, Martinez, that we heard exactly what you were requesting besides that.
Yeah, so my, my request, one more to, just to reiterate, was that I was asking for, anytime we have an ad hoc committee that's, that's reviewing ordinances or making recommendations and suggestions, where we put together a committee, we have legal representation, uh, and then just to. We have legal representation. Uh, and then just to clarify, I did speak with city, uh, manager and city attorney. From first meeting to second meeting, asking for representation and, and I don't know if that fell through the cracks, but no one was able to attend. And we did have issues arise at the second meeting as well. Uh, so that's why I would like to have something put on the books that, hey. It, it doesn't have to be the city attorney, but perhaps a clerk of hers or someone is there that we can bounce ideas off of, that we can make sure that we stay. Uh, on track and don't get ourselves in trouble. Is my recommendation. It's, it's here in the rules and that it's, it's applied to every. Uh, ordinance or committee moving forward.
So then the rules could say, on request, right? They had to be, and if, if they're not requesting, then you have to reschedule the meeting. Because obviously, why, why would you have the meeting if you don't have the representation that you seek?
I would say maybe upon the creation of the committee, depending on the subject nature.
At that moment?
Uh, uh, to say, you know, for example, we're talking about the food truck committee. When the council formed that committee and decided who was going to be on it. Again, just for maybe future reference, it would be good to have, you know, from staff, who, who is expected to be there? City manager, community development, legal. And, and again, I mean, I think it's still good to have, um, any. An, a line item here to talk about legal attendance upon request for committees, commissions, otherwise not noted or new ones.
But not all ad hoc committees are going to need an attorney.
They don't always need attorneys.
Just depends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so Vera, the floor is yours.
Are we done with all that? Cause I have something else.
Is it, is it, um, I have a question on ad hoc.
It's, it's still on.
Still on this topic?
Et cetera.
Go for it, sir.
So, reading this early several times. What we've done in the past for the planning commission and possibly other. Commissions and committees by just reappointing people is not in here. It clearly says. That vacancies shall be announced at a council meeting and invite the public to apply for the position or positions. And nowhere in here says that we should just, we can just reappoint. Planning commissioners or whatever. It's always been that way. Clearly, we weren't doing what this, this guide says. But what we did the other night is that with the planning commission vacancy is actually goes by this. We followed this. This is the first time I ever realized that you couldn't just reappoint somebody for another term on the planning commission. Which has happened for twenty-five years here, by the way. I think I was reappointed or was going to be reappointed or something. And then ended up on the council, maybe Daniel, the same way. So what we did the other night, we need to continue to do with. Appointments to these boards and commissions, make sure we open it up to the public. And at that time, set dates and guidelines and times when that, that's not covered in here. So that's something that we can do. But no more, unless we're going to change this, should we be just reappointing people to commissions and.
I want to make it, I know that I was one of the persons that wanted to reappoint, but realizing this conversation.
I was too.
That's right, so.
I was too.
So that, I'm, I'm along with the mayor, the vice mayor. I think that it's important that we are consistent as a council. And I would just reiterate that, yeah, that's, we have to follow the rules. If other council members and mayors have done it in the past, you know, that's just what, we have to make sure that we are following these rules.
I don't know that you've necessarily, I think you actually may have been working within these rules. And the reason I say that is, this is when a vacancy occurs. Typically, a vacancy occurs. Not, it, it could, it could be twofold. It could be interpreted twofold. One, when someone quits halfway. Or has to resign because they have been elected to council. And that's happened a couple of times.
Yes.
Uh, that's one. Because maybe the default, again, I'm not, and it. The default might be if someone's appointed, they can continue to be appointed past expiration of their term. It doesn't maybe necessarily create a vacancy until there is a creation of a vacancy. So to your point, maybe what the clarification should be is. What do you want the process to look like for true vacancies and for expiration of terms?
That's a good point. Currently, the person.
Well, before you were here. It was, it was routine for somebody's term to be up on the planning commission and the council just reappoint them. People were on there for twenty years by doing that. Not saying that was a bad thing. I think it was actually a good thing. But this clearly says, when a vacate, vacancy occurs, it does not say whether it's, they quit, whether it's into their term. It says when it occurs, shall announce at the council meeting and put, and open to the public. I think that's what we should continue to do, if that's what this says. Not, not looking at changing that now.
So maybe to clarify, when a vacancy occurs, either by resignation or by the end of a term, the expiration of a term.
Yeah. And I guess, let me add to that. Currently, the, the vacant, is there a vacancy or is that planning commissioner who wasn't reappointed, he's still filling the. The position up until we reappoint or he's no longer on the commission?
I don't know why we'd change this language at all. It's pretty simple. When a vacancy occurs, it's every time it occurs, we should open it to the public.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, to answer your question, that was the planning commissioner who was finishing my term, which is expiring. That's why that got brought to us.
Right, and that's expiring when?
That was the, uh, end of the year.
End of the year, and so this was a.
I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Originally my term, by the way.
Interesting.
It's a case in point, right?
Okay. So that, so.
I would suggest we just leave it like it is and when there's an appointment or a vacancy, we open it to the public. We go through that process. Like I said, if we want to set some parameters on, we'll give them two weeks, we'll give them a month, whatever, we can do that. I don't know if this is the place to do that, because depending on time and, and it might be like considered emergency. We might want, want to set those guidelines, because we would have to follow them then. If we can take it on a case-by-case basis and say, listen, there's a planning mission opening, we're going to open it to the public and it's going to close by December twentieth.
And I think, found that's kind of what your goal was, right? Get ahead of the game a little bit. That, in my mind, I thought to myself that the vacancy had already been expired, but I think that now remembering the conversations we had. That you were ahead of this. So is that okay? I mean, we stick with.
With all that being said, I think we just leave it like it is.
We don't need to clarify you, there's no legal recommendation to clarify, because that's the purpose behind council procedures.
I, I think.
It's an added amendment.
It's, it's just to add clarification is when a vacancy occurs, comma, whether by resignation or expiration of a term. Comma, and then rest continues.
And all it is, is basically a.
What if we decide to take, take somebody off? That we can add that to? What are all the other situations we could create a vacancy?
There's only three. You resign.
Resign.
You are removed, or your term expires.
There's a force.
I don't understand why we'd add that language. It clearly covers it when it says when a vacancy occurs.
If the council thinks it's sufficiently clear, that's fine. We don't, we don't have to make, change the rules just.
I kind of want to refer to what the gray area, by, by your suggestion, you would eliminate the gray.
It could, but it, it, it's council, it's council discretion. But frankly, I mean, it's more of a staff, if it, it's a staff question. If, do we think that we need to change anything to clarify the process?
Have you ever had any, any doubts or any questions about the process?
Well, there's no gray area if you leave it open. There's a gray area when you start making rules. Then what if it doesn't fit within those rules? That creates a gray area. How it is written now, we can do whatever we want.
Argue with that.
Whatever, on any way that vacase, vacancy occurs, we can do. We can send to the public and decide how long they have to apply. If we start making more rules and times and dates. And certain types of resignations or end of term, whatever, then we're going to be bound by those.
Real quick, I. I didn't look at who pressed what first, but I will give Rosalinda the floor. Okay, Daniel, you're first.
Give it to Mr. Mayor.
Some like light system.
I, I agree with Vice Mayor Silveira. I don't believe we need to add additional language to it. I, I believe it's pretty straightforward. Uh, and then by having it that way, setting, you know, the standard, moving forward, we open it up, we announce it at a council meeting. It will allow for more community engagement, more people to apply. And if the current sitting planning commission wants to apply, they go through the same process of interviewing and if they're the most qualified and deserve the position, then they should be appointed. But I feel, uh, that the vice mayor is correct. I don't, I don't believe the additional language is needed.
Okay. Uh, uh, Rosalinda, the floor is yours.
I guess my only issue or concern that I've seen that's come up this year is. With Measure H, we had one person that was appointed and always only attended one meeting before the term was up. I think that's the only scenario where I don't know if it's, then when we put out the publication, that it's going to be extended beyond the one meeting. I don't know if we'll go through the process for one. That would be my only concern.
I think that, because that was such a one-off, I think the council makes that determination at the time of appointment, and I think that we did that.
We only have two meetings a year.
But I think we did that, right?
Measure H.
For, for the Measure H appointment, I think the direction that we got from council was to fill and then continue. For the, for the next term. Correct, because.
Obviously, we didn't know it says in here not to do that at that point.
So I think that would be a one-off and it's more just get council direction at that time on how they want to tackle that particular situation, because it's unique.
But also with the med, that Measure H situation, there were very few applicants. I think there was only three. Uh, and some which. And the Measure H meeting, there are only two meetings per year as opposed to planning commission where there's, you know. Two per month, so twenty-four in essence.
That's fine if we're going to do that and, you know, emergency situation, whatever, or they don't, it's right before the meeting, just as long as somebody can defend it. And explain why we did it. Because there's some people that sit right up there, they're going to say, you should open it to the public. It doesn't matter when or where. And if they read this, they're right.
I, I just wanted to add, when? When is it appropriate to say that a ad hoc committee is no longer necessary? Does it need to be an expiration date, like for the food truck ordinance? We actually set it in the motion, right, to have two meetings? And then that was it, and they bring it back to council. What if there's an ad hoc committee out there that is no longer necessary? But we didn't apply a timeline to it? Is that at the discretion of the council?
It is at the discretion of the council. So my recommendation with ad hoc committees that nature is when you create it. You set the parameters. Here's who's going to go on, so here's who goes on it. Here, or, or, or the process by which we solicit applications. Here's the staff who need to be responsible for attending the meeting. So to council member Martinez, like making sure that everybody's clear who's going to go, who's attending. And here's the scope of what you all will, are, are authorized to provide the council recommendation with. This is our timeline and we'll revisit it if we need to extend it. But again, it's just about setting parameters. I don't think you need a rule for that. So it's more set by the council at the time that you create it.
And what if there was, there's an ad hoc committee out there that is no longer necessary, but we didn't give it a timeline? We, well, how would you, how would we do that? Do we need to bring that back to council? Should we have a discussion about it, or should we just?
I'll give you an example. So the most recent one was the mobile food vending. Uh, ad hoc committee. We have an agenda item coming up in the future meeting. Maybe at that time, we get direction from council on what you want to do with that committee moving forward. If you, if it, if it needs, if it's completed its task and its job and you, you're, you're basically.
If there's other ad hoc committees that are just, you know, out there now that exist that have no timeline. So do we need, do we need to bring it back as an actual item to close out that ad hoc committee, or can we just?
We have any?
Beautification, many.
Beautification committees.
I'm not, I'm not aware of any that are outstanding, but I also don't have a long tenure here.
A beautification committee is one of them. The, um, the military ban program is another.
You, you know what? Maybe a good opportunity to discuss that is you have the list that you produce every year for appointments to committees. And we can do it then, maybe as a cleanup. It's just a housekeeping.
It's January.
January.
But we, we need to make sure that all those ad hoc committees are on there.
Because actually, I do remember.
One.
I remember having that discussion with someone. I think it might have been you, Mayor.
Me, last year.
We were talking about, that committee doesn't.
Cleaned up a lot of things.
Yeah.
Things that existed before I came on, I came on council that were no longer active. They were just, they were just placeholders and nothing was happening.
So that might be the best time.
And that's, that is the best way, actually, now, now that I really think about it. Yep, Mr. Martinez, the floor is yours.
I had a question, just to clarify. City attorney said that, uh, when ad hoc committees are created, that there's an application process, because I. Remember myself and council member Viera, we were appointed and we were told there were already people for the committee that we were being put on. So is there? Is there a guideline to, if we create a committee, there needs to be a process of allowing people to apply to be on it?
No, I, I said that in the context, if the council wishes.
Okay.
To do so. So for, for the mobile food vending subcommittee, uh, the council's direction was to select. Specific individuals and then select from the council.
Yes, ma'am.
So that was set. Alternatively, you could say, we have this ad committee, ad hoc committee that we want. We don't really have anybody in mind. We'd like to open it up to the public.
Right.
And so at the time you create it, you set the parameters.
Or vice versa, if you have an ad hoc committee, create, you say, okay, it's the mayor and council member.
And then my second question is that, uh, the committee that, that council member Viera and I currently, uh, finished its initial. Mission, uh, but it was, in my understanding, that we were going to try and continue that to address a couple of different pushcart and other food vendor issues. Is that something where in that initial meeting, we need to make that clear, or when it comes up? Uh, at the next council meeting, is that something we would address then, that we'd like to continue that committee with its current members and address a few more issues?
I think you could do it either way. I think, so not to go completely into that topic, because we have that as an actual agenda item for future. Um, generally speaking, I think you set the parameters, give your ad hoc committee some leeway, revisit it. But again, it should be a, will always be a council decision, because it's a council-created ad hoc committee.
Gotcha, thank you.
Right. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it.
So I, that concludes chapter five. So to recap. There were a lot of things that we discussed today that I think could be managed better. Without hard and fast rules. So we talked about, uh, just keeping an eye on, on referral items. And making sure that they're moving along. Uh, same thing with communications regarding. The subcommittees and ad hoc committees. Overall, in addition to all the red lines we've already done to the code. Overall structure of making sure that the handbook applies to all committees, commissions and making it clear there. Legal, adding legal attendance requested, upon request for. I would say, I, I would say mostly for ad hoc committees and maybe like Measure H. Because as a standing rule, legal is always required for council and planning commission meetings. So those were the, the general changes that I wrote down for the meeting today.
Okay, um, the only thing I wanted to add before we leave is, when would we like this to come back? And my question would be, just as we are to do appointments, the updates. Probably have it during that same time. Councils and procedures be up in the same day, which would be probably what, January? I, I think so, right?
So yeah, we do our appointments, um, in January and bringing this back would just be an agenda item.
Yep.
That would be, I don't know what.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying that if we're going to make all these changes, it should be.
I apologize, I have a point of order, Mr. Mayor. We, we didn't, we didn't cover the inability to attend boards and commissions and. Selecting an appointed member to represent you. That was on the last page of what we just went over. I, I wasn't aware that we had the right to select an alternate to attend our boards and committees.
An alternate?
If you want to look at, uh, page thirty-one, is the right to, uh, assign an alternate. We didn't review or cover that at all.
Okay.
But we, we do have alternates for a lot of the committees.
For, right, so.
For us.
Okay, so for us. So like, if, if you can't make it, I make, that's the alternate we're discussing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to your point, I think you want. Clarification on whether that applies to any of the, the, the non-council.
Yes.
Oh, it shouldn't.
Okay.
At least my thing, it should alternate.
So I thought about this in the context of what council member Viera brought up with the quorum issue for the planning commission, of potentially having alternates. The problem is, it's like a stand-in, just some random alternate stand-in who doesn't typically attend. You, you could create an additional position for that on the planning, like as an alternate. You can, you can do that. Right now, that doesn't, that doesn't exist. And this language. It's not clear. I, I think this actually just applies to the council.
Okay.
But I could see how that could be interpreted, maybe to apply to the planning commission. So that's a question for the council.
Because had there been something in, in place like that, then we wouldn't have had so many canceled, uh, planning commission meetings frequently. But I see how we would want to. Hit the water and keep it.
I know this is not on the agenda, but we, we are having a work, a workshop in the future, joint commissions and. And we can review all these things, right?
Yes, sir. Okay, then I'll, I'll leave those questions to that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Other than that, is everybody satisfied? Okay, well, thank you very much, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Our second December council meeting would fall on Christmas. At what, I think about now, in the past, is when we would decide if we were going to move it to a different day, not have it or whatever.
So historically speaking, the second meeting of December has always been cancelled, cancelled based on council approval. And that is coming, um, on an agenda as in an item for this next council meeting on November thirteenth.
Thank you. With, with that being said, is there any additional comments by? Thank you. With, with that being said, is there any additional comments by, oh, Mr. Martinez, another one. Yes, sir. Floor is yours.
I just wanted to clarify, Fawn, so we will be voting to council, cuz I got an email that it was already canceled.
Uh, the email that you received is actually for the December meeting of next year, no. You got a couple meetings that were canceled for next year that fall on a holiday. Uh, for this December, I don't recall sending that out. Perhaps I did. Um, but it is coming to council because that second meeting of December has to be approved by council. So it'll be on the November thirteenth agenda for council approval.
Thank you.
You had the council meeting councilation for November twenty-seventh. Those sent out.
Yeah.
For, for that meeting.
All right, with that being said, this meeting is now adjourned.